Evening, everyone. We'd like to reconvene the Thursday, February thirteenth, meeting of the Lake Forest Board of Education. As always, if you would join me for Pledge of Allegiance, followed by my little segment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Thanks to everyone who has joined here in person, as well as those who have joined online. Just a reminder that we are streaming tonight's meeting across the internet. And that recording as well, within minutes will be available once they are approved. We'll start this evening with roll call of board members. Dr. Whitehead.
Present.
Mrs. McCloskey. Mr. Ralph, there, Vice President Sartini.
Here.
And Earl Dempsey, President, is here as well, serving his chair. Thank you all for joining. Two point four approval of agenda, Mr. Sartini.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. A motion on floor properly seconded and questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to vote all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Two point five, a little minutes, I make a motion, we approve the minutes, you know, January twenty third, twenty twenty five meeting.
Second.
A motion on floor properly seconded and questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to vote all those in favor. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. For the section, item two point seven, citizens' participation, reading from our agenda, time to set aside early in each Lake Forest Board of Education meeting for citizens' participation, to allow members of the public to address board members on any relevant topic. Reading from our board policy KP, Public Concerns and Complaints. Citizens' participation item on the board agenda is an opportunity for members of the community to speak publicly. Those who wish to speak publicly to the board must complete the information form provided at the board meeting and submitted to the board secretary prior to the opening of the meeting. This form should clearly state the reason for addressing the board. The public should not expect discussion or responses at this board meeting, and comments are limited to three minutes per person. We do not have anyone signed up this evening for public comment, which means we'll close that item and reopen it again at our next meeting in two weeks. With that, we're up to section three, reports, item three point one, financial report, Mr. Kurt Kellman, welcome, Mr. Kellman.
Good evening. This will be the financial monthly report for the end of January. And so it should go pretty quick tonight. We, the major change we have is just the revision on the budget numbers based on the, the final adjusted budget that we had last meeting. So all those numbers have changed, which, as a result of that, that show, it's going to make the, the funds received go down the percentage. So when you look at the, both the discretionary and the non-discretionary, the actual funds amount percentage received actually went down. So the other thing I will, I am going to point out tonight, because Michelle's going to give a presentation on Spec Ed this evening. But one of the things she's going to talk about briefly in her, in her presentation is the fact that we cashed in some units for our in-district High Roads class. And so those units that we cashed in, we earned, we had eight students that were, at the time of unit count, that we could identify, that earned us an additional three units over and above if we had placed those students out of district. And so with each unit that we earn, each additional division one unit we earned, we pick up, a lot of people don't realize this, we pick up division one salary money, we pick up division two AOC money, we pick up division two energy funds that are associated with that, division three, education, same in technology block grant. So there's, it affects six different lines up here for every single division one unit we earn. And so, for instance, division two AOC, we're supposed to get, when we earn two hundred and ninety-one units this year, we're supposed to get two thousand and nine hundred and twenty-five dollars per division two AOC unit. Now unfortunately, that number hasn't increased in over a decade, that amount that they give per unit. And in fact, I went all the way back to the year two thousand, so twenty-five years ago, the actual number per unit that we received for division two AOC was actually higher than what we're currently receiving per unit. So the good news is that the governor's recommended budget, they did actually put an inflation factor in there for that this year. So that's good news. But when you see her part of the presentation, and we talk about cashing in units, like, we cashed in almost eight units this year, and, and if you look at the budget bill, it talks about a teacher unit being worth like eighty-two thousand dollars. But there's all these other funds that come with that. And so that's what we talk about, and we talk about those three units are worth over three hundred thousand dollars in discretionary funds to us. So I just wanted to point that out.
Any questions on the revenue side? Questions for Mr. Kellman on the first page of revenue?
Moving on to the expenditure side, again, nothing major to report here, all the budget numbers have been updated. If we look down on page two, the tuition payments for special schools, we only have two more districts that have yet to submit their tuition bills, that's Capital and Christina, so we're waiting on those tuition bills. They do typically come in later in the year. And then the other thing is minor capital improvement, we've pretty much exhausted our state funds, our, our main primary source of minor capital improvement funds. And now we're in the process of requesting those enhanced minor capital improvement funds. But we're at forty-three percent of our discretionary budget remaining compared to forty-four percent last year, not a huge change. And all funds, forty-seven percent compared to forty-eight percent last year. So any questions on the expenditure side?
Any questions for Mr. Kellman on expenditures or anything on financial report? All right, so this will come up for a vote later in the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Kellman. Up to three point two, we have a special report tonight, special education report from Miss Michelle Allman. Welcome, Miss Allman. Floor is yours.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here. I'm going to go over our special programs, starting with, starting with our update on our numbers of special education students. So this year, we have seven hundred and forty-nine special education students, resulting in about twenty percent of our population. I put some numbers up there on the top of where we were last year, and then how that kind of fares statewide and nationally. Just so you know, Delaware is about fourth in the nation, fourth highest for the percentage of students with IEPs. And our numbers are consistent with the state numbers. We are seeing increases in our special education students, you can see how they're distributed across the district. I have them classified by their funding categories, like Kurt was saying, so you can see there's a K to three basic and a four to twelve basic. And then the intense and complex. And so the students, as they're classified in those needs-based categories, those generate, different ratios generate units. So in the complex, two point six students identified as complex generates a unit, and intense, six students generates a unit. And then the four to twelve basic is eight point four, and K to twelve is twelve point two. Let's see, some of the things I want to point out, our pre-K, oh, sorry. Our pre-K students, we do have students in there that are typical students that do not have an IEP, but federal regulations only require students attend school if they have an IEP in the pre-K level. So we don't get any funding for students that don't have an IEP in pre-K. Our total number of students, three thousand seven hundred and three, and seven hundred and thirty-nine of those students have an IEP preschool through twelfth grade. With the increase of student numbers and the complex and intense, we, that generates units, which also generates related service units. And our related service people are all the ones that provide all the services attached to the IEP. So our speech, our special education coordinators, our school psychs, speech, language paths, OTs. So I wanted to show you, just since last year, we've been able to grow our department. We've increased our school sites from three to four. Since I've been here, I've been able to hire two additional school sites, so we're pretty well stacked there. Our speech language, we've gone up to, from six to seven. I've hired two additional ones in the past two years. Occupational therapists, we had zero when I arrived, and we have two now. One just started yesterday. So we're really excited to expand that department. And our OTs, we have three. So a little fact about this. In order to employ our occupational therapy assistants, you have to have an occupational therapist employed, and one OT can only supervise three quotas. So we're excited that we've been able to expand to a second OT in case we do need to expand our, our quotas. So we can have opportunities to grow there. And then when I arrived, we only had one behavioral health specialist, and now we have four. So we are growing our department to meet the needs of our kids. So sometimes we have students with such complex needs that they may require a specialized screen booking, and that's kind of what Kurt was talking about. So this is the distribution of our students. Right now, we have eighty-three students that are in ex, external or alternative placement. So the first line is that Capital and Caesar Rodney and our Christina Schools, those are other school districts in the state that are a part of a consortium that allow us to send students because they have specialized programs that we do not have that DOE funded. And so we pay tuition per student for those students. And so that's the cost all the way on the, what is that, right? For our tuition for those programs. And then you go into our private programs. So High Roads, we utilize both the Felton and Georgetown campuses. That's a, a private program, Shore Haven, and that's a day program, Shore Haven and Stetson, those are private residential programs. Next to that, you see ICT thirty, that's the cost that's displayed up there is our thirty percent that we pay. All of those students, we apply to go through the ICT process. Once they're approved, then the state, if they see the need for why we are utilizing that placement, then the state picks up seventy percent of that bill. So that's the thirty percent that we pay. So the total is displayed at the bottom for our outside placements. Next slide. Five oh fours, we have two hundred and eight students who have a five oh four currently, that's about six percent. The Delaware average is also six percent, and the national average is four percent. Those are the numbers broken down by grade bands. I do just want to point out some differences between five oh four and IEPs. So IEPs fall under IDEA, and the E is really important there because that's the Education Act, and five oh fours fall under ADA, so that's Americans with Disability Act. So an IEP, the student must have a disability that shows an adverse educational impact, whereas a five oh four, the student has a disability that must substantially limit a major life activity, such as walking, communicating, breathing. And once those, once that disability is accommodated, it should not have an adverse educational impact. So that's why we utilize the five oh four. Most five oh fours are medically diagnosed and not considered educational. If they do start to show adverse educational impact, then that's where we look at an IEP. Our school counselors, our case managers in each building of the five oh fours, we do not get federal funds for five oh fours, it's not educational. It actually falls under the Office of Civil Rights, so we don't have any federal fundings for five oh fours. And then the bottom is just some PD opportunities we've provided for our five oh four case managers. And another special program we have here is our multilingual learner program. We have six percent of our students fall in our multilingual program. We are much lower than the state percentage of ten percent and the national percentage of eleven percent. But even though we still are much lower, we are growing. You can see those numbers from twenty twenty-two up to twenty twenty-five in the grade bands, and that we are consistently growing every single year. When I came, we had two MLL teachers, we now currently have four. We are still continuing our K to three MLL Academy, which has really greatly helped us localize our teacher support, because we don't generate any MLL units, our numbers are still so small that those teachers are not generated through units. We pay for those teachers through our opportunity grants. So it's nice to be able to have a teacher at every building where our MLL programs are located. And at the bottom, I wanted just to quickly let you know that every family who enrolls a student, they'll do a home language survey. And if they indicate that any different language other than English is spoken at the home, then we screen them to take a test to see if they qualify for MLL services. And then that creates a WIDA score, and then we put them in a program depending on that score. So the next slide kind of just goes into that a little bit more in detail, just, just so you guys know how we use their English language development score. We, what I like about this WIDA test is that it gives us what we call can-do descriptors. So it tells us what the students are capable of doing at that level. So we provide this guidance for teachers so that they can see, based on the scores that the students are scoring on that test, what they can do in the classroom, and then some recommendations for how we can support them in the classroom. And then also the recommended hours that our MLL teachers work individually with those kids based on their individual scores on the WIDA assessment. So just a little bit more information about how we provide programs for our MLL learners. So we have some project updates. We are still continuing our special education parent advisory committees. I encourage everyone, if anybody wants to hop on those Zoom meetings, it gives an opportunity for us to get parent feedback. And we're also planning another parent information night. We had one last year that was really well attended. We have partnered, I'm really excited, last year we started partnering with KSI, and we've been able to utilize their camp, Camp Lenopee, and we use that for our twelve-month programming. So students who need twelve-month education year-round, certain students are entitled to that based on their disability. And we can use that camp for their twelve-month, which has been, we've gotten such great feedback from parents that the kids really enjoy kind of being off-site in a different location that's, not that school isn't fun, but if, when you're going for twelve months, you kind of need a different, you know, place to have those classes. So we've been able to use that. And then we've also implemented Ufly, which is a reading-based intervention for our reading based summer programs. We've gotten a lot of great results from that. It's an online program, and we're excited to expand that for summer services again this year. High Roads, we've expanded High Roads, we, to two classrooms. So we have an elementary that serves grades K through four, and then the middle programs are grades five through eight. The elementary still houses at North Elementary, there's nine seats total in that program. Currently, we have five students in that program. And then the middle one is housed at Chipman West, we have nine seats available there. We only have two students in that program, but it's new, and so we wanted to have it in place and established for, to be ready so that students can, instead of utilizing so much of our external placements, we can start to keep our kids here and work with them so that we can integrate them back into a less restrictive environment. And then there, you can see, we did cash in three units to pay three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred, three hundred and twenty-five, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand towards the cost of the High Roads. So as we populate that program, that cashing amount will eventually, we're hoping, for a minimum, for example. We're continuing work on the University of Delaware IEP project. Last year, we had over fifty hours of training with the University of Delaware, and all of our coordinators are now running school-wide PLCs all year long to push out the training with their teachers. And we've had really great feedback on that program as well. And we've also been able to extend it to individual coaching model with the special ed teachers at Chipman Middle School. And then this year, I'm excited that we are attending multiple conferences. So our SLPs attended the ASHS, American Speech, Language and Hearing Association Conference in Seattle this year, and that was really great. Our school psychs are going to Seattle next week to attend the NASP conference. And then we have our Council for Exceptional Children, which we're sending twenty-two people. I'm really excited because it's in Baltimore, so it's close. So I want to get as many people there as possible. And then our AOTA, our American Occupational Therapy Association, we're sending them this year, it's in Philly. This has been really great for our related service team members, because they, there's not a lot of professional development for them in the district because they're so specialized. And so this gives them, they have a required amount of hours that they have to take to maintain their license. And so this gives them those opportunities to get, to gain those hours, maintain their license, and be better in their role, bring all their knowledge back, and utilize that with our students. And I think that is all that I have. Do you have questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Allman. Questions or discussion from the board or our special education presentation? So I have a couple, you know, I would. So if we look at your, go back to maybe the
The numbers.
The third slide, the overview of the department. So it looks like from last school year to this year's school year, we went from twenty-eight to thirty-one total staff in the department. So where are you from a staffing perspective? Is that the right number? Is that too many? Is that not enough?
Yeah, so I feel like right now, I would say we are fully staffed. I think that as we generate related service units, we, Travis is really, I'm super grateful that he lets me kind of just post what we can post and see what we can get, because they're so difficult to find. So we have some school psych positions out there, and occupational therapists and speech therapists, and they might sit at, you know, zero applicants, and then as we get candidates, I'm always eager to add to our group. So right now, I think our speech language therapists are getting at the max end of their caseload. So I would love to add to that group, but right now, we are definitely covering K to twelve. We do have a need at our preschool for some more therapists. Those numbers are growing rapidly, so we're always looking to find some more people for that area. But I feel good about where we are. We have, we're, we're doing, we're doing pretty well comparatively to some of the other districts.
Yes, yes, that's an understatement, I think, in some cases. So that's, again, we said it before, but hats off to everybody that's involved in that. The, the ratio of OTs to the quotas, you said, was one to three or one to four?
One to three.
One to three. So in this case, so we've got, so if we drop below that ratio, for whatever reason, wh- what happens? So let's say we
We don't, we don't have to employ occupational therapy assistance.
So I guess what I'm saying is that, let's say, we had some turnover and lost an OT, and we ended up, I guess, not below the ratio, above that ratio. What, what then happens?
Yeah, that's a good question. So currently, so up until this year, we haven't had an in-district occupational therapist. So I've contracted with a part-time occupational therapist from a local agency who really, the, the supervision is like a once-a-month check-in with our, our quotas. She has to review their goals and progress. And I do have to say, our three quotas are so fabulous and have so much experience that they supervise themselves pretty much. So we're in a really fortunate place where they are on the limited supervision kind of on the chart. And so I was contracting part-time with outside OT.
And that satisfies?
That satisfies, yeah.
So that could be a fallback if we ever get in the situation again.
And then we hired an occupational therapist this year, who was a graduate from Lake Forest, so we're really excited to have her. But she has to have a year of experience before she can start supervising. So we just, it's just been a great addition to have that second one, because she can kind of take over. We didn't, we could let go the contractual OT, and now if we wanted to expand our quotas, we could.
And then the last thing that I have is on the next slide, the cost of placements. So when we look at the secondary ILC, is there any other option than that placement, or is that the only choice that I have, a monopoly on?
That's a really great question. There's not really an option. In the secondary, we do tend to send students there sometimes for behavioral reasons. So if there's a potential long-term suspension, in lieu of a long-term suspension, we can utilize the secondary ILC. So the students can still get services, not have to go like on homebound. So in that case, they could go there for forty-five days, and that number, actually, we have received three students back within the last week, couple of weeks. So that number is reducing, because they can go for forty-five days, they can have a successful completion of the program, and then come right back into our program. So that number is fluctuating. Some of those students go there for the long term, but we always are trying to get those students back. So we did just receive three back. And then I wanted to point out that the elementary ILC, those five, my goal is to transfer those students back into our High Roads program by the end of the year. So I predict we might have one student left at the elementary ILC at the beginning of the school year next year, with the remaining four in our in-district programs. So that's kind of one of the reasons why I wanted to build it, and then get the kids back into our, our district.
So the, in these costs that are listed, they are a per-student cost?
It's a per stu-
No, they're actually the total cost. So like, if you see five students for the elementary ILC, that's the total cost for all five students.
And so we get, like Kurt said, we haven't gotten our tuition bill yet, because they'll give us like an estimate in the beginning of the year, and then we kind of reconcile that at the end of the year based on how long the students were there, how many months of service they, they received. Some students drop out of the program or move to a different school district, and so that number does fluctuate. This was the number I think that we expected at the beginning of the year, but then, at the end of the year, we look at those numbers again and kind of reevaluate.
So then the capital, Mr. Kellman, I'll, I'll ask you as well. So the capital secondary ILC that's listed there, that, the total cost anticipated for the year, correct?
Yes.
And, and so I noticed that it's thirty-nine percent increase with one less student. So is that simply driven by a rate increase from that school?
We have seen capital has increased significantly each year over the last couple of years. So the cost per student has gone up to the point where every time when they give us tuition billing, whether the, the rate per student exceeds ten percent from the prior year, they have to provide justification for that. It's really not that difficult for what they have to provide for justification. I don't think anybody really checks up on that.
And to whom do they provide the justification?
Do we?
Not to us. We just get kind of a, a bill randomly, and we're like, whoa, that, that price went up. So that is one of the reasons why, when we're building our own in-district programs, we can start to lure these kids back, and then not go without
Yeah, and that's certainly exorbitant. And I, and I remember it coming up previously, but I don't remember seeing the numbers like this, so.
And I think they're kind of moving up consistently across the board, correct?
Yeah, and that one fifty could change. I mean, you see ten there, so as she mentioned, every time we get a tuition bill each year, we get one once a year, each year, and it's supposed to come by the end of December, but we haven't received Capitals yet, and we haven't received Christine's yet. And so that just delays them getting their money, you know, but they haven't gotten to the point where they've collected all the information and submitted it to DOE, because that's the process, is they have to identify what that cost is, then they submit the form to DOE, and then DOE blesses it basically, and sends it to each of the districts that they're charging. So in that form, they do look at last year's actual numbers. So if last year, we say we had, we, we thought we were going to have eleven students, and we actually had twelve, well then, they fix that on the form, and they'll put twelve students now who we actually had last year, and then the cost per student. And then if they, you know, estimate, you know, originally, we were thinking we were going to have eight, and then that, maybe that estimate goes up, but the big portion of that form is really capturing what the actual costs were for the previous year. So there's a, a little bit of truing up going on with that tuition billing process, because we're, we're kind of paying for the changes from last year, and then we're also accounting for the estimates for the future year.
So it's just one bill each year approximately, this time of the year?
Yeah.
And so when a student enters into the program, we're not always sure how long they'll be there. Some students complete it quickly, some students Some students, it might take a long, it might take a bit longer. We look at the data every marking period to assess if they're ready to return or not. Um, and then that will adjust the cost because some kids are only there for a short amount of time and some are there for years. So.
So I'll, I said, that was my last question, but I have one higher level theoretical kind of question. So I know you said our percentage of students. Kind of mirrors the state, but that we were, the state overall was so much.
Do you want to go back?
Higher than the national average.
Yes.
Why do you think that?
Yeah, I'm really glad that you asked that. I was gonna, I was gonna add that in, but I forgot. Um, so I asked our coordinators. Because I wanted to dig into this too. Um, I know it looks like from one to three, two or four to five, that those numbers are really jumping up. Um, I do want to let you guys know that just this year, we've had seventy-two students move into our district already identified with an IEP. So Central, for example, had fifteen students enroll this year with an IEP. Um. The high school had twenty-five students enroll, um, um, that already had an IEP. Chipman had twelve students enroll.
And when you say enrolled, meaning coming from other.
Coming from other states, coming from other districts, yeah, already identified. So that does add to our numbers. Um. And I think that that adds to Delaware moving up to fourth nationally because. Um, I've heard from families that Delaware is the place that you live when you have students with special needs, um, because our programming is. Um, kind of exceeds some of the surrounding states. Um, I just got a phone call yesterday from a family. In Colorado saying that they have a student with autism and they want to move to, they're going to move to a district. That can best suit their students' needs anywhere in the country. And they called here because they had heard. Delaware is a great state for students with autism. So it's, it's, um, you know, it's a blessing and a curse. Because Delaware is also, um, a burn-approve state. So we, um. If a parent requests an evaluation, we honor that.
Yeah, they have that, my, like, I look at it and it's either, it's, it's one of two things for me. It's either a difference in the students or it's a dis- difference. In the systems. And based on your answer, I got a, a third choice there. It's that. Our students are different because our system's different, meaning we're getting more of these students because of the system. So it's, uh, very interesting. So thank you. This is Starkey.
The High Roads program at Chipman, is that for any secondary student? It's not just middle school, correct?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, that's a good question too. We, we, we're trying to keep students in those programs. They have, um. They require a small student-to-teacher ratio and more therapeutic classrooms, um, to work on self-regulation skills. So. Um, we wanted to try to group kids closer to their age. Um. The elementary, we had, in the first year, we had a preschool student in there. We didn't want to have fifth grade, you know, it was kind of a, a large. Um, age level. So we moved fifth grade up to eighth grade. Um, so it's fifth through eight. We don't have any six, seven or eight currently in the middle school program, but I wanted it to be available in case a student needed that. Program. Um. So we have the flexibility. We actually buy seats, so it's not really organized by grades. We just kind of, you know, I, I talked to Dr. Lucas. About like what our vision is and, and how we want to support the students. And we just felt like if we grouped them closer to grade level. Then they could, um, just be with peers of their same age. So then we have flexi- flexibility in that.
So our high school students, are they in Georgetown or do we not have high school students in?
Our high school students are at Felton because, um, the High Roads Felton placement starts at fourth grade.
Okay.
Um, and so right now we only have three students that are at the Felton, um, High Roads. And we haven't expanded the in-district to high school because, um. The three students that are at the Fountain location are doing really well there. And so we were cautious about disrupting their. Um, educational path. Um, and we just didn't see a need yet. At this moment for that population to have an in-district therapeutic classroom.
Any other questions for Mrs. Allman? So thank you for a great presentation. Thanks for a great response to your grilling questions there. And, um, thanks to everybody in the department for the great work they do with such a special population.
We have an amazing staff.
That's great.
Here. So I'm really, really, um, blessed to be able to work with such great people. Um. If we're done, I am excited to announce that Heather Hitchens is going to, she gets to do all the fun stuff. Um, and tell us, give us an update on our Special Olympics. So she's our Special Olympic Coordinator and she's going to give us an update on. That program.
Welcome, Mrs. Hitchens. We're up to three point three Special Olympics report.
So I heard I have five minutes, so I'm gonna do it two and a half. I got that. Yeah, thank you for having us. Um, this position was created last year. And so I'm just very grateful for the opportunity to be here to show you what our students are doing with Special Olympics. So that our program, I'm just going to go through some quick achievements that we had last year and update, um, for what we're doing this year and what we hope to do next year. Uh, kudos to South. They were our second school to receive a state unified banner, which was presented at our welcome back ceremony in August. Uh, there are certain requirements that you have to meet to receive these banners. Uh, it's not just to do it to get a banner. It is. Proving that they are meeting these requirements. They are holding, um, clubs and lunch bunches with students with and without disabilities. They are, um, participating in fundraisers and they are also, um, what's the third one? Yep. Sorry, they're participating in fundraisers, they're holding, um, tournaments and they are. Having like a kindness club or those type of things with peers and just incorporating inclusion throughout their, their day, almost every day. So South was our second school, Central was our first school and now we have South Elementary. So we're excited. We hear that Chipman's trying to get on that bandwagon. I know that Mr. Pearson wants a banner, so he is on it. We're excited to see him next. Um, it's really exciting that Central actually received the national banner recognition. I believe we were the tenth. School in the state and only the fifth elementary school. So it took Central six years to get there. I'm super proud of the work that we've done. Um, to receive that. I feel that that is a testament to what the district has done. Um, I started here six years ago. And inclusion wasn't a term that you heard that often. And now it is not a term. It is just who we are. It is who we are becoming. And I love that. And this banner proves that. It, it proves that our students with disabilities are just as important. As our students without. Um, Dr. Lucas always says that he wants his students here to be employable, enlistable or enrollable in college. And these students with disabilities are just that. They are going to be one of those. And that's because of not just the Special Olympics program. But what Ms. Allman does with hers as well, like this program is a platform for these students to be one of those three things. And I think that they will. Okay. Um, Nine of Heroes, this was also really cool. So Special Olympics Delaware, they do a Nine of Heroes every year to celebrate. The, the people in the community that make this program as amazing as it is. Delaware is also one of the only states. That student athletes don't have to participate. And it's because of the community that they have created. They actually created an award for the school district and Lake was the very first school district in the state to receive this award. Um, it was an honor for me to go and I'm literally sitting there and after you hear all of the testimonies saying, why am I here? What have I done to be among such great people that have truly been in this program for twenty, thirty years? And here I am just six years in. And to be here, it was an honor to represent Lake Forest. So that is a testament to who we are and where we've come with this program. It was a beautiful evening. Um, the athletes actually come up on stage and they introduce us and to see that. And to hear the love and passion that they have for what we do for them was just truly humbling. So. Thank you to Lake Forest to allow me to accept that award on, on our behalf. This is a really cool evening. Uh, Bachi was fun. There was no fall delay this year. Yay, Mr. Weller, we got it. Uh, that was the great day. Um. The high school hosted, made an amazing job as always. We had a hundred and twenty-two athletes and sixty peers. So all of our schools attended CNS, Miss Montana knocked it out of the park with hot lunches and snacks again. The kids really loved not having to eat peanut butter and jelly. So we are grateful for that. Um, Ms. Dawson hooked us up with transportation and had New York Games and Ms. Allman funded us. So Bachi was an incredible day.
I did it fun. The idea.
We also had a community member that built these really cool ramps. I don't know if anybody saw them for students with wheelchairs. And they presented them to him at Chipman. It was really amazing to see this community come together and provide them with those. So, uh, we actually had other school districts. That reached out and were like, that's really cool. How'd you do it? But it's just a testament to what we're building within our community as well. So, and Dr. Lucas officially opened the games. So that was pretty cool. Uh, our goal for Bachi is to be fully unified. So what I mean by that is I want every single one of our team to have a student with. And a student without disabilities. And we are so close. We are going to get there next year. Uh, most of our schools are doing it, but I have, I have the goal that next year. Every single team on that field will be unified. Uh, okay, the inclusion feast at Central. So we held this in November. It was the first time that we got our. Parents together with our kids from Bachi. So we were able to host everybody over at the school. We had our kids. And our peers come together. We had a great meal provided by CNS as well. Um, and staff stayed and served our families and our students. And then what was really neat is I stole the Nine of Heroes idea and I had the students, uh, present each other with a warden. So it was a student-led opportunity where our students with disabilities came up and presented their peers with an award because they can do it. And I wanted to give them that, that opportunity. So it's really cool. Our leadership conference, our elementary, Special Olympics Delaware has a leadership conference every year. And that is for our students to go and actually plan and be student leaders. Elementary, all of our schools attended and secondary, Chipman. Led the ball and they knocked it out of the park as well. So we were excited for that opportunity. You will see the results of that in March during Inclusion Week. On what they came up with and planned. Okay, so one of the fundraising requirements in order to get those banners is that you have to participate in one of Special Olympics fundraisers. So they have two, they actually have a lot, but the two that they offer for schools are the Polar Bear Punge and Over the Edge. We can get the next slide, I think. Polar Bear Punge, I totally left Mr. Weller out this year because I got the flu. So I did not do it. I'm so sorry. I owe you.
It's all right.
I know, I owe you. Um, we had twenty-three plungers raising thirty-three hundred dollars. We had a great team show up. I have told my husband he has to take me down because I don't feel right wearing the sweatshirt without doing it. So, but I had the flu. I just can't do it. I can't do it. So we're going to do that soon. Uh, Over the Edge, we had, this is, last year we had four, twelve team members. This year we have fifteen. Our goal is twenty-five thousand dollars and five hundred. Uh, it is on May eighth. Last year we raised so much money. We were able to take Mrs. Allman and, uh, support her. She didn't have to raise anything. She got to go and just scale down that wall for these kids. It's horrifying. Uh, it's horrifying. It's a live day. Um, again, these fundraisers are just the reason that our kids in the state all across. Don't have to pay. Uh, fun fact, and then I'll stop talking. I went to, um, what, how we raise money is we build. Community relationships. And I go around and some of my team members and we present at local lodges. And we've been doing that. For the last couple of years. And I went to one last year and I presented this and a guy came up to me and he said, my granddaughter. Needs this in her life. And I said, okay, let me help you. And then I went to a barbecue over the summer. And there was a girl in the pool and she was just like knocking out of the park. I can't swim. So I'm looking at her and she's dumping off the diving board and she's doing amazing. And her grandparents walked up to me and they said, she's now in swimming in Special Olympics Delaware because of you and what your team did. And she's loving it. And they said that it changed their life as a family. So like, I know we're raising money. For Special Olympics Delaware, but it's coming right back in our community. It's coming right back in our students and our families. And that's why I feel like that's so important. So that was just my, um, story. Over the edge is terrible. That's terrible, but it's okay. Uh, just some highlights and spotlights. We did a homecoming float this year. What I like about Special Olympics is that it's not just one school, it's all of our schools. So every school made a banner and we talked my husband into pulling the float and we all rode and had a great time. Um, last year you guys saw Johnny on WBOC. He knocked it out of that park. All that kid needed was an opportunity. And he really changed a lot of lives. So that was super fun. Uh, Respect Week is coming in March. We have our clubs. Deck is joining. She's done here. Deck is joining and holding their first event in May to get the little kids involved. And then we also have. Elementary and secondary participating in soccer in May. This was something that is near and dear to my heart. When we were going to WBOC, I said, I need a shirt to wear. What am I going to wear on the news? That's what every woman thinks about, right? So I came into school and I said, guys, we need an inclusion line. And Mrs. Hancock, she's the parent at Central, just blew me out of the water when she developed this line. And we now have an inclusion line that we sell and it is amazing. We sold forty-three orders. We have a profit and that money goes right back into our students and the things that we do here at Lake. Okay, so our future plans, we're going to expand. We want to outreach. We want to get every school continue to grow. We want, um. The inclusion line to be student-led. Our goal is for our students to make the shirts. We've been working with the high school and Chipman. We have a hat press. Like we want our students actually doing the inclusion line. We want to cultivate new avenues of students and we want to host more events. And we want to just continue to build this culture of inclusion that every kid is valued and every kid matters and has something to bring. I think I went over two minutes, but thank you. Thank you guys for all that you do to support us and we are very grateful for you.
Two and a half minutes, exactly. You sound surprised. Uh, questions or discussion for Mrs. Hitchens and our outstanding Special Olympics reports? So I will just say hi to Mr. Rollo. Well, thank you for not having the fall delay because the last two years I've tried to make it and it's been rescheduled to a date. I couldn't make it. And this year I was actually able to make it and I did. It was, just as I would expect from any Lake Forest event, it was well-planned, well-executed and, and just a lot of fun.
You know, a few fall delays we've had in my time here have been on Bachi already.
So, um, anything from anyone?
I just want to applaud the work that you and the whole group are doing. It's very, um, an incredibly, um. Necessary thing and it's helping a lot of people and reaching a lot of people. So I appreciate that. Um, I do also want to comment on. The drastic change in your wording for the over-the-top thing when you're trying to recruit people to after recruitment is done and then you're honest because it's. I'm, I'm glad to see the numbers from twelve, fifteen, but I've never heard from you, Over the Edge is terrible or I hope it's terrifying when you're trying to.
Yeah, I, yeah. Don't let her talk you into it. It's not.
No, trying. That's why I'm glad the numbers increased without my participation. I will be there to watch that day. I'm going to work out in my own office, but, um, I'll be watching with two feet on the ground.
So what?
This is Dark.
We find the inclusion line, like is there a website or?
It's a website. Um, it's on the central homepage. And we also have sent out flyers. We're piloting, sending out like, we just ordered. Uh, youth sizes because we were just doing adult sizes. So it is right on the central website.
All right. Thank you again. Thank you. All right, we're up to three point four, secret, people intended. Dr. Lucas, you have a couple tough acts to follow.
We'll be under two minutes. It's always great to start my report off with some good news. We've heard a lot of good news tonight, but I would like to report that hospitality teacher. Ms. Sue Post from Lake Forest High School is a finalist for the Superstars in Education and Training Award to the Delaware Restaurant Foundation. Uh, D R F applies for this award based on Pro Start, its opportunities such as work-based learning and apprenticeships. Congrats. To our students and Ms. Post over at the high school. I'd also like to congratulate Coach K and the WT Chipman Wrestling Team. They capped off an undefeated season by dominating twenty-three other teams at the end-of-season tournament in Milford just last weekend. Chipman wrestlers racked up sixty more points than the second-place team. They really dominated. Top performers from Spartans included Colton Peeler and Chaz. Waller, who both won their weight classes. Josh Lawson and Isaiah Bullock took home second-place finishes. Cam Hen- Henderson, Luke Roswell and Kayden Miller, third place. Elijah McBride, fourth. And Chase Bonneville and Mason Carey finished sixth. Congrats to those wrestlers on a great season. Also want to send some thank yous and cred- some gratulations out to the staff, students and parents for our first ever Inclement Weather Remote Learning Day yesterday. Was our first one, right? That's the first time we had to do that. Uh, by all reports, teachers and learners took. That's the first time we had to do that. Uh, by all reports, teachers and learners took advantage of the opportunity to learn yesterday despite not being able to get into school. Uh, while we fully understand face-to-face learning is by far the best way to learn, it's great to know we were able to plan for, execute yesterday's weather and make, uh, lemonade out of, uh, lemons. Given that we're already up to five days to, uh, because of the snow in January, we need to find creative ways to keep the learning going and we were gonna do that yesterday. So congratulations and thank you. We did send out a survey for our staff to get some feedback and, uh, hopefully learn and even get better in the future, uh, face with future weather emergencies. Always like to send out some calendar reminders during my report. As we all know, February is Black History Month. And schools have been engaged in learning about African-American history and culture all month. Uh, this includes each school having an assembly to create, to celebrate the many things they are learning. And I'd like to invite everyone in the community to our District-wide Black History Night, February twenty-eighth. Lake Forest High School Dinner will be served at five. The program starts around six. Uh, please check our website for more information and RSVP if you're gonna come for dinner. Uh, finally, just wanna remind everyone, the district is closed Monday for President's Day. And, uh, that's it. Thank you. I yield the floor back to the board and President Dempsey for any questions or suggestions.
Thank Dr. Lucas. Uh, questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas and his superintendent's people. Uh, just one question for you. So Mrs. McCloskey was supposed to ask you this earlier, but she and I noticed on your desk. I'm doing a duo lang- learning a second language, Duolingo asked me about it, so we're gonna ask you about it.
Well, that's interesting you should say. So Duolingo is a way to learn, uh, languages. And I believe there's also Duolingo math, in fact. Uh, but, uh, I got sucked into it because my daughter was doing it. And then Mr. Black actually kinda has a little Duolingo club over at the high school. So he noticed, I guess he saw me doing it and, uh, came over and gave me the, the little note thing there. So, so I encourage everybody to do Duolingo. It's great. It's fun and you learn a new language.
So I assume with Mr. Black and his involvement, that is Spanish?
Uh, si, senor.
Great, great. Well, um, just wanna just say thank you for living what we preach, right? And that's the fact of being a lifelong learner. So, so we encourage our students to, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move on to section six, Board Policies. Item six point one, Board Policies, first reading. This is a discussion item. A few policies we'll go through one by one. Starting with EF. Food Services, so. Questions or discussion on, uh, EF? So I think a lot of these first ones are Miss Montana's, I'll ask there, just the removing the part at the bottom. What, what was the driving fault between removing that section about students bringing from home?
We moved that up into the first.
Oh, is that all of us? Just made, just made it more succinct and put it in the first. Okay, yeah, fantastic. Alright, I didn't catch that when I read it. Thank you. Anything else on EF? Uh, on to EFA, Food Purchasing Slash Selection. In discussion on this policy. See, no, move on to EFAV, Use of Surplus Commodities. Questions or discussion on this policy? See, no, move on to EFC. Free and reduced price food services. Any questions on EFC? With discussion. See, no, move on to EFE, Competitive Food Sales Slash Vending Machines. Questions or discussion on EFE? See, none, move on to EFH. Food Service Sanitation Program. Question, questions on this policy? Do none move on to EFI, Food Services Records and Reports? In discussion on this policy? Move on to EGAB, Photocopying Services. Any questions or discussion on this policy? See, no, move on to EGAE, Mail and Delivery Services. Discussion on this policy?
Just a question. So this stated blue at the bottom, but is that actually what's, because typically when there's a change, it's in red. So is that actually gonna happen? The top three sentences gonna be combined in one paragraph? Cause usually it's actually there and it's been redlined. So again, you see the change.
Do we know whose policy that is? Though I had that one, yeah.
So, yes, which is fine. I'm just curious.
It'll get condensed together.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
That's a recommendation.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Ralph. We move on to EGAF Telephone Service. Making this a very succinct policy, questions or discussion on this? And then lastly, EGD, Use of Technology Resources in Office Services. Discussion on this policy? Just had one minor thing, I think. The way I've, I've read it, the first sentence in the second paragraph, should that be, should the fifth word be, sorry, sixth word be through instead of though? The district will provide guidelines through AUPs so that employees are aware. So it's just a minor change. Seeing nothing else, we will close our discussion on Board Policies. This will come back up for a vote later in the evening. With that, we move on to some action items. Section eight Personnel, Mrs. Starkey.
Section eight Personnel Resignations, I make a motion, we approve resolution eight point one and eight point two.
Second, emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section nine Personnel Retirement, I make a motion, we approve resolution nine point one through nine point three.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? I will again just recognize some, uh, long-term Lake folks there. Some names very familiar that will be sad to see go. Had a chance to celebrate at our event in May. Uh, seeing nothing else, move to vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section eleven Personnel Transfers, I make a motion, we approve resolution eleven point one and eleven point two.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section thirteen Personnel Alteration Performance, I make a motion, we approve resolution thirteen point one through thirteen point three.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section fifteen Personalities of Absence, I make a motion, we approve resolution fifteen point one and fifteen point two.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Staying in section fifteen Personalities of Absence, I make a motion, we approve resolution fifteen point three.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Uh, any abstentions? Motion fails zero to five.
Uh, section nineteen Personnel, I make a motion, we approve resolution nineteen point one and nineteen point two.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Still in section nineteen Personnel appointments, I make a motion, we approve resolution nineteen point three.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, the chair abstains. So the motion will carry four to zero with one abstention.
Section twenty-one Other Business, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-one point one, school choice as written.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section twenty-two Other Business Field Trips, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-two point one as presented.
Second. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
Section twenty-three Other Business Financial Reports, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-three point one as presented.
Second. Motion floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero.
And section twenty-four Other Business Floor Policies, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-four point one as modified during discussions.
Yeah. Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Starkey. Thank you, Mr. Ralph. We're up to section twenty-five Board Report. In discussion items, twenty-five point one, Delaware School Board Association. This is McCloskey.
I don't have any news of work.
Good. Uh, any questions or discussion from Mrs. McCloskey? Mrs. Starkey?
Something. I saw that Mr. Paul sent out, um, an email. But I'm not sure that everyone got it, so I will forward that to everybody.
Cuz I don't remember seeing.
Okay, I will forward it. Um, just jog my memory.
Is that the NSBA email?
Yes, did you get it?
From Dr. Aaron?
Yeah.
My answer actually says Dr. Aaron, yeah.
Okay.
Interesting, is, yeah.
Well, we're all, um, members and alternate, so that's probably why you didn't get it. I'll send it to you now.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Um, alright, thank you, Mrs. McCloskey. Mrs. Twenty-five point two Legislative Committee, Dr. Wyatt.
Hi, it was a very, um, interesting meeting. A lot of conversation about different bills being introduced. Of course, um, one of the ones that I was thrilled about was the amount of teacher academy scholarships that, uh, our students will be able, uh, to take advantage of. Unfortunately, I had to abstain, um, from voting, um, for that because it directly, uh, is my job. So, um, I confess. The other one that was a, a big topic was the bill that failed for the funding of our school resource officers. And the discussion basically led to that when they came up with the figures, they had used the highest possible salary and benefits and then just multiplied that by the number of persons that would be employed, which is a really inflated figure. So now that that has been defeated, they're in the process of hopefully rewriting. So we look forward to that. There was also some bills that, uh, have not been introduced yet, but will be introduced. About school board members and, and how they can be removed from their position is, is one area. Another was about additional training. And that's about my reporting.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Very interesting questions or discussion for Dr. Wyatt. Alright, thank you again, ma'am. Uh, we're up to twenty-five point three. Go to the order. Opportunity for workers to address other topics otherwise covered on the agenda for Israel. The boss.
I just found amendment to end Chipman for, um,
So thank you to the administration of both schools, everybody that was involved, not only with that event, but just overall
the
with the partnership that's necessary to ensure that smooth transition for, for our students. So, thank you all.
So one.
Yep, Mrs. Starkey.
Um, I know last year, Dr. Lucas, we had one for the community too. Was that in the spring? The Community Open House. I can't remember the beginning of this year, but this spring. It was, okay.
Yeah, cuz this was relevant.
Okay, so is that something that is planning, like, we're planning to have yearly?
Our community leaders open house?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I, I originally had thought about doing that every other year. Felt like this year, since it was the first year, we missed a lot of people that we would want to meet. So I think we'll probably do it again next year.
It's all running together, to be honest.
Okay, so, um, just, there is one more scheduling night for eighth graders, correct?
There is.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure everybody knows.
Yeah, it was supposed to be Tuesday night, but we rescheduled it for next Tuesday night, uh, given the weather.
Yeah. Mrs. McCloskey.
Um, and also I do want to, um, just bring up, um, for the high school with the teachers who are committed to doing, um, this SAT prep on Saturdays, that, um, I think it went really well. I know that, um, that I think there were eighteen or so that attended. Um, hopefully we can get some more, but I just want to know that that's well appreciated by the parents. I, the kid, my kid went on her own. I didn't have to, you know, so I'm glad that it's getting out to them and, um, we're, we're preparing that for them. And there's people willing to do it in their time.
We, we have plenty of interest in problems we're enjoying, so. It's, I think it's longer around. And we, you know, we will have more this Saturday, I think, than we had last Saturday. And some of the kids are even rearranging work schedules and things like that.
Great.
Alright, thank you. One final update for me. Talk again about school board elections. Gonna give, um, one final update between the, before the first milestone. So we, Lake Forest Board of Education has one seat scheduled for an election this year. Terms now consist of a four-year commitment. Uh, the filing deadline, as always, is the first Friday of March, which this year is Friday, March seventh. Um, and elections, uh, will follow. They are always the second Tuesday of May, which this year is Tuesday, May thirteenth. Um, we do, since our last, uh, meeting, we do have some candidate filings. Uh, so I will read directly from the Delaware Elections website. Um, so for the four-year term, we have, having filed, and February fourth, Darrell Hughes of Felton was listed as a provisional candidate. Um, and filing February tenth, Mr. James Al Rao, uh, from Felton, who is listed as a qualified candidate. Um, so thanks to both gentlemen for filing, for their interest in filing. Arguably, there's no greater method of having local community impacted by serving in your local districts. Um, and starting with our next meeting, the filing deadline will have passed. We'll provide a final update on candidates and then start announcing the actual election, um, details. That is all I have. Seeing nothing else, I do not believe we have a need for executive session. Any board member? Mr. Mormon? Dr. Lucas?
No, sir.
Alright, well, with that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Have motion for adjournment properly seconded. I will mention that our next meeting, this is important, our next meeting, two weeks from now, Thursday, February twenty-seventh, will be held at the Delaware Early Childhood Um, and elections, uh, will follow. They are always the second Tuesday of May, which this year is Tuesday, May thirteenth. Um, we do, since our last, uh, meeting, we do have some candidate filings. Uh, so I will read directly from the Delaware Elections website. Um, so for the four-year term, we have, having filed, and February fourth, Darrell Hughes of Felton was listed as a provisional candidate. Um, and filing February tenth, Mr. James L. Rao, uh, from Felton, who is listed as a qualified candidate. Um, so thanks to both gentlemen for filing, for their interest in filing. Arguably, there's no greater method of having local community impacted by serving in your local districts. Um, and starting with our next meeting, the filing deadline will have passed. We'll provide a final update on candidates and then start announcing the actual election, um, details. So. That is all I have. Seeing nothing else. I do not believe we have a need for executive session. Any board member? Mr. Mormon? Dr. Lucas?
No, sir. Alright, well with that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Alright.
Second. Have motion for adjournment properly seconded. I will mention that our next meeting, this is important, our next meeting two weeks from now. Thursday, February twenty-seventh will be held at the Delaware Early Childhood Center, uh, down on West Street and, uh, Miss Pillion or uh, Miss Pillion Street down in Carrington. Uh, public session will start at seven o'clock as usual. Uh, we have a motion on floor properly seconded, entertain, uh, a vote. So all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The board is adjourned eight twelve PM. Thank you all very much. Stay safe out there.